All right, let me get this thing going up here. So Elise, I forgot to tell Jen and well, the staff about your message to me. But Elise will be here with us for a little while and then she's going to jump off and then she will come back as I understand it, right?
Yeah, I may just mute it and then go take my call in another room and then just come back. So I won't leave the meeting necessarily.
Elise, are you really there or is that a background from your Vermont cabin?
This is the cabin here at Alda.
No way. That's really cool.
Yeah, do you see the skiing? Do you see the skiing dog behind me on the picture?
Yes, I do. I was just gonna say something about that. You know the houses that burned down?
Yeah.
They had the first one, E, had that exact same thing in it. And I asked the firefighters, it's like, yeah, if they don't want that, can I have that dog thing in the guy?
Is that from the Howie collection, Elise? The Howlett collection, I suppose?
The curtains are, no, that artwork, we, that someone gave that to us. It's supposed to be banjo skiing or something.
Cool.
And then there's a little picture down next to it that's a cat on skis and that's the, I don't know if you remember that lady that used to do the artwork and she hung out in the Albee and Grill? And her dad used to be in there with the headphones and she did all those wildflower pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a cat picture. I have like four of her pictures. We have this big one that came from the old Watsons. It has all these cats on skis and under the old wildcat lift.
Oh, remember who that was?
I don't remember her name either, but she had some pretty stuff. I have something, I have the castle with some wildflowers. It's pretty.
I'm Mike Mon and Jay Torgerson.
Well, I didn't see him.
Her name was Judy Cal.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Hi.
Hello Cliff, Mike and Jay.
Hi. Looks cold up there, John.
It was. I wish it was like that right now. I wish this was live. Mike is smiling.
Top a wildcat, huh?
Top is sunny.
Oh, is it? Yeah. Hi Sheridan.
Hello.
I'm getting a call. I wonder if that has to do with this. Hang on a second. Little her son deck. There goes spam. Happened at the last town council meeting too. Maybe it's a, it's a weak effort to zoom bombing.
Excuse me.
A zoom hat.
All right, Margaret.
She's having some technical difficulties that I'm trying to figure out with her, but everybody else is on, so.
And I got all blurry for a second. I'm gonna turn off my camera because it seems to. Okay. I wonder why that happens. All right. Well, we have a quorum and it's 3:30. So what do you say we get started? This is the virtual work session from 3:30 to 4:30 and then the out the town council meeting of Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. I see a recording button working. So are we good to go, Jen and?
You are.
Okay. Okay. Pursuant to a determination that I made yesterday, which was following up on a new state, on new state code. We don't have, we can continue to operate these virtual meetings without a physical anchor location. So I'm just adding that. I don't know if I needed to say that or not publicly, Polly, in this meeting, but.
Yes.
Okay.
You need to, if you could just kind of summarize the whole thing.
Got it.
Be, or read it.
Yeah.
That's what the whole, that's what the state code requires.
Okay, do you want me to share the document actually?
Sure.
Visually as well or?
Yeah.
Okay, let me do that and then we can read it as well.
I think if you show it, you could probably paraphrase it.
I think this is it, yes. Okay, so I've determined that not having an anchor location. Well, that having a meeting with an anchor location presents us the substantial risk to the health and safety of those who might be present in that anchor location, given the continuing strengthening of the evidence that indoor locations are not well advised under the pandemic. So the positive cases has been rising and the percent positive in the test have been rising. So we're going to continue not having a physical anchor location until it expires on August 6th, 2020. So we'll have to have another finding like, another determination like this prior to the next town council meeting if that seems warranted. Is that correct, Polly?
Yep, your determination is only permitted to last for 30 days.
Okay. All right, have I fulfilled our obligation? Okay. All right. So going back to the agenda, then there are two items on the agenda for the for this work session. And the first one was that we have a fiscal year 2021 budget that we have adopted. But we, are there any questions at this point before we get our final sales tax numbers? Is that correct, Piper? Is that what's going on here?
We can't change the, we can't adopt a new budget or amend it because we didn't have a public hearing or enough notes. We can address that in another point, but I just wanted to go over the recommendations if we were to adopt it or if we were to amend it at a, at a later date.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have that pulled up at the moment, but I'm gonna get there. But I believe that everyone has a copy of a budget correction, I think I called it.
It's called a corrected fiscal year 2021 budget. With a budget worksheet corrected as the title on the document itself.
Yes, I'm going to the town website to find that.
Would you like me to share the document?
Sure. Thank you.
Just a second, please.
I believe I wrote in an email to the council to summarize what the changes are. They're pretty small amount of changes. One was on the top line of that corrected budget, which is a property tax revenue. Because I quoted the wrong, I put the wrong CTR rate in the last resolution. That's why it's on a resolution to correct that this month. The difference between the two rates was meant about $1,400 in in property tax revenue. So that's one of the recommended changes.
And you can see, you can see that in the difference between these two highlighted numbers, correct?
Highlighted these two on the top line, the third and fourth column.
Yeah, do you see that I've highlighted them with, and they're in blue. I've selected them. Can you see, do you see that or not?
Yes, because I'm looking at a different.
Oh, a different document, okay.
You are, but the rest of the people are.
And I just want to point out that Margaret, Councilmember Burke, looks to me like she's joined us by telephone to, at the moment.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so this was one thing that needed to be pointed out. Anything, what's next?
In addition to that, if you scroll, I changed the same, by the same amount, I changed the unreserved fund balance that we're gonna use. That's in the 1039 area.
Here. So this goes down by that same amount?
Yes, thank you. Yep. Yep, and then the only other difference I believe is in the water budget. So you go down to page, I don't know, 11, 16, 14 maybe?
You have a line code for me?
5139 maybe?
Got it.
Okay, again, I'm trying to get there. And then, so the water budget has changed. Last month in the budget that I submitted as Exhibit A, the water budget did not balance. And because I thought we were going to address the water rate changes, it was off by about $33,000, I believe.
Yes, I'm showing that highlighted now.
And so Jen and I dug deep on the calculations for what it costs to run the water system. And we came up with, that we would need an 8% increase in water sales to cover those expenses.
Okay, and so that is shown in, for example, well, that's shown in line 500-40-110. Is that correct?
110, 5139, sorry.
5140, 110.
No, that's, well, that's the beginning. That's just salaries and wages, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So that's part of what you were just talking about, about allocating to the water fund, staff costs that the water fund actually takes.
Yes.
Correct.
But the, the total on expenditures where we had, if you go down to page 12, we had said that, or in the budget that was adopted, it said 357,000. It's actually 365,000.
Right, so that, that's the difference here. Okay.
Yes.
And the difference in expenditures comes from salaries and.
Were administrative costs that were not in there.
Okay.
And there were also, we added 10,000 a year that's going to go into the budget every year to replay, to save up for media, that the treatment media that has to be replaced every three years.
Right, so rather than have that be approximately $30,000 cost every third year, we're gonna put $10,000 in every year.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
I, I believe that that is the extent of the changes and we're not addressing it this time. I just wanted to go over those changes that would either be next month or whenever we do a budget amendment.
Right, okay.
We are addressing the water rate change in a resolution later in the meeting.
Okay. All right, does anybody, any of the town council members have a question about these proposed amendments to be adopted in a subsequent meeting of the town council? Okay. Okay, very good. So then five minutes ahead of schedule then, if we don't have questions on that, I think, let me go back to our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the water rate change that you were just referencing. So you wanna, well, so, so I think that the issue here is that by town code, our water rates have to cover our, our revenues from the water system have to cover the expenses of the water system.
I think the regulation for a what's the kind of fund it is?
Enterprise fund?
Enterprise fund, it's gotta cover, the revenues have to cover the expenses. So, yes.
It's supposed to work like a going enterprise.
One other factor that I didn't mention on the administrative costs was the purchase of a new software module that will integrate with our Casell software or accounting system that will be a, that's made specifically for utilities and it will help our invoicing be more specific to water. It will tell everyone what their water usage is by month. And so they can tell in a timely manner if there are problems with their system, a leak or that they're using too little water, too much water, whatever.
Yeah, and that's a very useful feature, proposed feature or expected feature on our bills because we did have a problem in the last year. Was that last summer? I can't remember. This time is so compressed.
Past year.
Yeah, in the past year where one of our customers had a leak and didn't realize it until they got an overage bill. And by that time, much water had been wasted and money. We worked with them to solve this problem, but they got a surprisingly large bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if this is an appropriate time to interrupt, but Margaret was, when you called for questions a minute ago, she wasn't able to unmute herself. I have made an adjustment to her now. So I don't know if we want to go back and see if she has questions, but.
Well, although it's not as though we have to take these things exactly in a linear fashion. And anyway, we still are within two minutes of the 3:45, so.
Yeah.
So Margaret, please, it sounds like you ought to, you want to say something about the budget. Perhaps it's something about the budget other than the water rate implications. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I, I apologize. I'm having technology issues today, but the questions that I had maybe relate not to the water rate, which we're gonna address later as part of the council meeting, but in terms of the budget itself and how we're handling some things and maybe that's not to be addressed now either because Piper was saying that we're not going to deal with those things now because we didn't have proper notice. So I did have a number of issues that I wanted to talk about. And so you tell me when that's the appropriate time to raise them, relate to both the budget and water issues.
Well, I think, I think that's what we scheduled this half hour for, so feel free to bring them up, please.
Okay, thank you. One, one thing in terms of the budget was I'm wondering, and I know there's little money, I'm wondering if we should consider engaging a management consultant to help us evaluate our costs and revenues and make recommendations for us. And maybe the way to proceed is through a multidisciplinary graduate program. We're obviously in a very difficult situation with the virus pandemic and our expenses somewhat are fixed and yet our revenues are either declining or have declined or are uncertain. So that's one thought I had. The other question kind of relates to that, related to ACBB that the organization itself last month said that there was no demonstrated return on investment under their current model. And so it's really unclear if advertising would be necessary or to what extent it would bring folks in. And the suggestion was maybe we go with ACE and develop a model there. And I'm questioning whether giving or potentially giving 42,000 to ACE, an organization that I support, both monetarily and with my time, whether that makes sense for a return on investment either. If, if we get revenue from them from sales tax, and I don't know as a nonprofit if they can collect sales tax or not, if sales tax is 10%, in order for the town to get any money, they've got to generate 420,000 in revenue for the town to get back even the 42K that we would invest. And then the last thing in terms of budget was, again, the impact fund expenditures for the feasibility study. And I know we talked about that last month, but as I understand it, it is something that we have to limit where we spend those funds. And that's based upon an analysis that's done when those fees are assessed. But the time period for that expenditure is statutorily determined and determined by our ordinances. But as I understand it from the state code, it can be extended beyond six years if the town council formally makes a resolution that says, this is an extraordinary circumstance. We can't do it within the time period that's there. It seems to me a global pandemic would qualify as an extraordinary circumstance. And that in addition to that statement, we would simply have to say, but we will expend those funds by a date certain and put something in there to that effect. So I'm suggesting that we as a council look at this in a more comprehensive way, either as part of this discussion or as part of future discussions regarding the, the budget itself and how we are breaking things up in terms of overhead and administrative costs, how we're splitting that and how that's done. And the last thing had to do with the water fund and I think that the water rate, that we're increasing the water rate about 39% over the last five years for both the standard rate and the overage. And I don't see that we're incentivizing water conservation, that any amount over the base is applied at the same rate. And potentially we should increase that rate as they do at the service area. Number three, that it depends on how much water you're using, what that rate is. And so could we potentially both encourage water conservation and increase our revenue by doing that? And also at the district, they offer a discount if people prepay their annual water allotment. And of course, that doesn't account for overage. But that would save both administrative time in billing on a quarterly basis. We would have some little money that we would draw interest on for that time period and there'd be an incentive for people to pay it early.
Okay, so you just said a number of things. I do have, I do have some thoughts about some of them. Some I've thought about before. I do know that, I was going to say in my mayor's report in a few minutes, that Salt Lake County has offered to lend us Darren Casper, their director of finance, to take a look at some of the risks that we face from extraordinarily, the possibility of extraordinarily low sales tax revenues this winter. And I think that we could get some help from him in a, in, to your first point. The other place that I think we could get some help is, I don't know that it's being done for governments, but I do have a connection. I do know that the David Eccle School of Business at the University of Utah has been offering businesses, teams of students to do consulting, just like you were suggesting. So I could, I'm happy to see what we can ask Mr. Casper and also I can talk to the person who's running that program, the name of which is escaping me. And on a, while you were talking, I did a quick search on their website, but I didn't want to keep focusing on that because I wanted to pay attention to what you were saying. Would that be consistent with what you're talking about on that first point?
Am I there or?
I hear you.
Okay, yeah, I, in terms of my idea, yes, I think it would be consistent. So I don't, I obviously can't speak for the rest of the council, but I, I think to the extent that we can get assistance at a little cost to us would definitely be worthwhile.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have to pay the county anything for Mr. Casper's help. I think they just offered that.
Great.
I, it was in a conversation that I had with Mayor Wilson and Catherine Cantor where I pointed out that essentially the move that they forced us into, which is currently going to raise sale, property taxes in town means that it seems quite unlikely that the town council would want to raise property taxes to make up for lost sales taxes. And so that got their attention. The ACBB question, what we decided to do, I, I understood was that it's in the budget, but it is not to be expended for now, at least I think it was till the end of the year. Isn't that what we agreed to?
That was my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so we don't actually have to take any action on spending that money for now, Margaret. It's just, it's just, we, we have the money. How can I put it? We have the, we have the money on paper because we have the sales tax from the 1920 year, which is, some of which is being carried over in unreserved general fund. So we can make this decision about ACE when we see what they come back with in terms of a real proposal, which they haven't made yet.
Okay, as long as we don't have a contract that requires us to do something that we're not really in a position to do.
I don't know, Paula, you want to weigh in on that? It seemed to me that our conversation with ACBB and ACE recently was pretty clear. They agreed that we did not make an agreement with them, as I recall.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty clear. And we also made it clear in the contract that we had the ability to cancel, from what I recall, so.
Yeah, so I don't think we're exposed on that dimension. And you know, the thing is, is if, if the unlikely and very positive thing happens, we could end up with really not being all that hurt, except for the last six weeks of the 1920 ski season, right? I mean, if if we got lucky, the ski area opens in November, the lodges have people and we don't really rely that much on summer revenue anyway. So we could be way better off than some other resorts that do rely on summer, summer money.
And Snow Pine is open now. I don't know what their revenue stream is, but at least it's open.
Yeah. So the, the impact fund, I, I mean, I thought that the staff came up with a pretty good idea about using that because it is there and does have a horizon and we to, to have signed a contract and to back out of the contract on the claim that, and then to claim that we need to take an action that such, such a contract was impossible seems a little bit convoluted to me. But if the town council wants to do that, that's up to the town council, I guess. As far as water overage, I thought the water overage, I thought we did charge a higher rate for the overages, Piper, isn't?
My understanding is that the overage rate is higher than the base allocation rate.
Yeah, that was my understanding too. I, and I that was my understanding from our side of it. And then as a, as a homeowner at the blackjack, I had a conversation with them about overages. This is actually maybe something, Margaret, that you, you might find interesting. In the summertime in the, in the blackjack, to get hot water to the west side of the building takes a long time because you got to heat up the whole pipe to the building because there's a central water heater. And it's a waste of water. And I, and I pointed that out and I said something about overage costs. And the response I got was, oh, we've never paid any overage costs because we're always within our, I guess it's an annual allocation, Piper?
It's actually a monthly allocation.
Oh, it must just be that there's hardly anybody around in the summertime then, so. So my having to run the water for a few minutes, this doesn't make enough of a difference, I guess. So never mind, I was going to suggest maybe we go to a monthly allocation, but I guess we're there.
Yeah, he had mentioned to me that for the service area, they have the first 4,000 gallons over the allotment. For the next.
Margaret, you're getting some feedback, let's see.
If I can just push in here, so I think that's a tiered overage that a lot of cities use. So after you go over your, your minimum base, your first, let's say, 20,000 gallons are at a certain rate. And then if you go over by 30,000, the extra 10,000 go up at an even higher rate. We do not have that. Our overage rate is the same, no matter how much you go over, but the overage rate is higher than the base allocation rate.
Right, right.
Can I suggest that, uh, given the current increase, it would be timely to take a look at our, the structure of our water rates? And initially, maybe Keith Hanson can point us to the best current thinking on that. And shouldn't be too much of a burden to simply get up to speed on to what is the, the best current thinking on water rate structure?
That, that makes sense, and we'd have to, I mean, I'll just, I'll just put an appendix on that of the best thinking in a situation where people really aren't watering their lawns in the summer in Alta like they do in the valley, which is part of the rate structure for Salt Lake City and Sandy, for example.
Yeah, except the tier that he was talking about was for snowbird, for service area number three. So they're not watering.
No, I know, I, right, right. That's why I was just saying that he will be able to tell us about being in the canyon. And I don't know, I mean, do we have users who go way over their allotment?
Jen, I, I would say not that much over. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, you, I mean, you're, you, you shouldn't. You know, we had a situation that happened last year, but I think that happened. We've pinpointed why that happened, and there were some things involved that have been fixed. You, you know, in a commercial situation, your ECU value, which is your fixtures and the size of your building are determining your rate. So ideally, you should be in somewhat of a balance because the more fixtures, toilets, things that you have, the higher base rate you're going to pay initially, but the less chance you're going to have of having an overage, right? Because that matches up well. And so the situations where I see overages are where those maybe aren't as closely paired as they should be.
Yeah, I.
That's my assessment.
I mean, I, I don't think that we should have as a goal revenue production, really, other than to save money for infrastructure against our depreciation, really, seems, seems to me, and other obligations, but it shouldn't be. In fact, we probably are prohibited from using these fees to fund our general fund. Isn't that right, Paula?
Yeah, you can't use those. But you could structure it in a way so that you're getting more money from overage and then maybe less money for the other ones or just. Can I just jump in about the impact fees just briefly? So even though you can use the impact fees more than six years out under extraordinary circumstances, that's actually not that hard of a hurdle. The impact fees are earmarked for capital projects. So you couldn't use your capital project funds for general fund matters. It has to be used. They were collected for capital projects exclusively. So just to be clear about that.
So I don't know, I have not fully, I, I have investigated a little bit about what happens in a dissolution effort, but I have not investigated what happens in the case of insolvency. I would imagine that a judge who is working that out or the state agency that's working that out, Paula, would seize all of the assets of the down at that point and figure out what they wanted to do with them. And it wouldn't, wouldn't really be under our control at that point anyway. And they might give it back to the impact.
That's what I was going to say, that's what they would do. If you're not going to use it for what it was taken for, it would go back to the developers, property owners who paid it.
So they're not really fungible dollars is the point.
Right, that, that was just my point. And just the other thing was, I was just double checking that termination clause. And for the ACVB, we, either party can terminate it within 15 days notice, and you're paying it monthly $3,500, I think it was at a time. So, um, yeah, so you're just paying it monthly. So if you, if tomorrow we decided we wanted to cancel it, then we'd only pay, you know, we'd prorate it for what we used.
I didn't think we were paying them anything in the, in the meanwhile.
I believe that the contract has expired as of June 30th, and, and that we don't have one going. We're not operating under a contract right now.
That's what, that was my impression too. And we just decided to leave the money in the budget, but not to sign a contract with them, yeah. And they're, they, they'd come back with a proposal for what they want to do with the money.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. I just remember editing the contract that.
Yes, and we, and we ended up not executing it.
Right, okay, yeah.
Okay, so, so now we're, now it's three minutes after four. So how about if we move to the regular meeting? And Margaret, if you want to bring up and make a motion in the regular meeting that pertains to what we've been talking about, that of course is your, when we get to the item on the agenda, that's your privilege. Does that sound good if I call the town council meeting to order?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll call to order the virtual Alta Town Council meeting of Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. It's 4:04 on, on the 8th, and we're scheduled for the next couple of hours. First item on the agenda after calling the meeting to order is citizen input. Jen, I think you are managing this process?
Yeah, um, and so we have two folks that have joined us. Karen Travis, I tried to communicate with you to see if you wanted to speak, and I didn't get a response yet. I have just unmuted you. Did you want to make a public comment? Karen?
Karen still looks muted to me.
She's muted.
Right, I've asked her to unmute, but she has to accept that.
Yeah, I've, I've unmuted, and I don't have a comment, thank you.
Okay, thanks for joining us today, Karen.
Okay.
Okay, and I have spoken in advance with Kyle Maynard with Friends of Alta, and he does have a public comment. So Kyle, I have unmuted you, or I've made a request for you to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, how are y'all doing?
Good, Kyle.
So I, I just want to comment real quick about the UDOT EIS and then the presentation. You know, primarily, I want to encourage some questions from the council for the presentation that you're going to hear. Friends of Alta has long been an advocate for buses and utilizing the existing road infrastructure, especially if that road will continue to be used and maintain the character of this beautiful canyon we live in. But outside of specific transit preferences, we have some significant concerns that I would implore the council to consider and ask UDOT to clarify. That first concern is the use of mass transit as what I call a pressure release valve for the road. We have the opportunity to flip the script on how we move up and down this canyon and use mass transit as the primary, if not the sole, mode of transportation for visitors in the canyon. However, this project proposes the using the road to its utmost efficient capacity and then using mass transit as a relief for that, that capacity on the road and, and most likely adding people to the canyon. I know that UDOT's estimation of 1,000 riders on mass transit is a result of realistic incentivized travel on, on mass transit. But we have an opportunity here to, to kind of use more of a stick instead of a carrot and prioritize the use of that mass transit. Our second concern is the estimation of visitorship and the numbers of travelers per hours. This is where I would, I would ask the council to consider getting clarification on this. And these numbers are based off of page 84 of the recent report. By 2050 numbers, there'll be 11,300 cars in the canyon with no action. That's 20,340 visitors based on a 1.8 user per car in the canyon. For all the alternatives, UDOT estimates 1,000 people on mass transit, which is 1,800 people by car. For, for these alternatives to reach the 20,000 people per day number, that would have to run up the canyon at capacity for seven hours. My worry is that the reality is travel happens within a three to five, four hour window. And so how is, are those numbers accurate? Are we more likely looking at the same with not worse traffic on the road in addition to a very expensive transit project that is moving people up the canyon at only 1,000 people per hour? My worry is that there's an efficiency problem and a, and a numbers problem as far as the movement of people. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to talking to UDOT in just a few minutes, as a matter of fact, as you know. So thank you for that timely heads up. Is there anybody else, Jen? I don't see any other.
That was it.
Attendees. Okay. We usually have a couple of frequent, I guess nobody's flying, but frequent flyers on our public input. All right, so then I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, welcome, Ms. Hobbs. This is Salt Lake County Recorder, and we'd like to have our public officials join us in our town council meetings, especially when the weather is good. We'd like to welcome you to your study. Usually it would be our town council chambers.
Hi, thank you for having me, Town of Alta. I appreciate the introduction. I understand, I think someone's going to be running a PowerPoint for me on the Property Watch.
Yes, I think that's right. Who's doing that, Jen?
Hi, Jen.
Hi, I had sent it to you in an email, Mayor, but I can pull it up as well if you'd like.
Hang on a second, I'm sorry. Okay, I prepared the, I, I knew I was on for the UDOT. Hang on, here we go, I've got it.
Okay, I can pull them up.
All right, uh, we'll do it in the, in PowerPoint then, right?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Hang on just a second, let me share this. Okay, do you want me to go into the presentation mode? It'll fill up my screen, so I won't be able to, I don't know if I'll be able to see. Let me move, move that over to the other.
That's the perfect slide to start on, and presentation mode's just fine.
Okay.
The mission statement, that would be great.
That's you.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, and here's the mission statement. So just give me a heads up when you want me to advance.
I will, Mayor, thank you. I'm often asked what the county recorder's office does, and we record every transaction that has to do with real property. We maintain a database of over 14 million documents. And for every property record to be recorded, it has to be reviewed for accuracy, to make sure that it's complete, and it's very time consuming, and I've got a great team. This year so far, we've recorded over 157,000 documents, and we're on target to have a record-setting year in recordation. We have been busy, and we can continue to see our volume of work maintaining. We do all of this with 42 employees, and I am confident that I have one of the, if not the hardest working team in Salt Lake County. I'm very proud of this team. We're doing a lot of work, and we're staying busy, and the work is continuing to come in. Next slide, Mayor, thank you. This shows you some of that volume that we just talked about. Our office has seen an average increase in documents of 40% in the first half of the year, as you can see there.
Is, if I can ask, is that just because there, because of an economic situation? Or is this, is this related to the pandemic for some reason?
I would say the economic situation, the pandemic, I don't know how much that plays into it, other than maybe making sure that your house is in a trust and people thinking about ways to secure their property and the record on it. But I would say it's more economically driven. And then it's a hot housing market. A lot of people, I've, I've talked to people who are interested in buying a house. They'll go and look at it, and it's sold the very same day. So it's a hot housing market right now.
Yeah.
So I would attribute to that. And it seems to be holding. Uh, next slide, thank you, Mayor. These were our 2019 initiatives, and these really set us up to being the place we're in now. We work to ensure collaborative relationships with our fellow recorders across the state to ensure best practices. And I've learned a lot from my peers. They've been very gracious in sharing their wisdom as I've taken on this new role. So I've been part of a really great team that has been very generous with their experience in being a county recorder. I've greatly benefited from the conferences and meetings that I've had with them. We meet with the major title companies. We did before COVID, one-on-one, to ensure that their needs are being met. Those are ongoing conversations that we have with our partners and making sure that they're getting the help and resources that they need from this office. We can go to the next slide. Community outreach and taking government to people is very important to me. We visited all of the 16 senior centers in Salt Lake County to offer seniors a complete record of their property free of charge. And this went very well, and in fact, so well that sometimes we had lines depending on which center we were at. We were able to serve hundreds of individuals. And taking our office to them was very appreciated, 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 sorry. And it also got us thinking about ways in which we can better serve Salt Lake County and leads us to Property Watch. We can go to, maybe go to the Property Watch slide. In talking to a lot of the seniors when we were visiting the senior centers, this opportunity was their first opportunity to get a copy of their property record. And we had a lot of them asking what type of information is available to them and how they receive it. And we started thinking about what we could do to notify people when changes are made about their property. And this is a service that we created internally, Property Watch. And right now, currently, we have over 6,700 registrants. If you go to the next slide, Mayor, thank you. And it's really easy to sign up. I could actually walk you through it if you wanted to do it now with your smartphones. If you get on the county recorder's website, one of the first tabs you'll see is Property Watch. And it asks for your first, last name, address. And then once you enter that information, it will automatically populate your parcel number. And that email will be kept on file exclusively just for the use of notifying you if there's been anything recorded on your property. And I believe the power of Property Watch is knowledge and being informed on any transaction recorded on your property. When you're selling a house, that's certainly not the time that you want to find out about any surprises about your property. And so Property Watch is what I consider a way to stay informed about very likely the biggest investment you'll ever make. And so it's been favorably received. We hope that you. And so it's been favorably received. We hope that you are able to pass the word to your community that this is a free service available to them. Lots of emails going out daily to our subscribers, letting them know of a transaction that's been recently recorded. I myself received one. We did a refi on our house. So I think it's the power in Property Watch lies in the fact that you'll be able to stay informed and know if anything's been recorded on your property. And once you subscribe going forward, it's that easy. Once if we have a good email address for you, we're going to be able to get those notifications to you. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the feedback that we've already received so far about Property Watch. You'll see some of the words we made bold, powerful, useful, educates the public, easy protection, gives the public a quicker response time if you're aware of it. So these are just some of the emails, and we get a lot of them, mostly of positive. So I'm very proud of Property Watch having been internally created in this office. And during this pandemic, we've been able to be innovative. And during this time too, we're also been able to be working this entire time with a skeleton crew onsite with about 75% of our team working remotely. And we implemented a plan for that in March. And with this recent surge of numbers, we've gone back to our phase one plan. But throughout this entire pandemic, the recorder's office has been open. And Property Watch is going very well, and I would really ask that you could encourage your community and friends and families to subscribe. And spread the word, and we can go to the next slide, Mayor. So for 2020, we'll just continue to focus on people, process, product. If there wasn't a pandemic, I would have you come and see for those of you that are interested in Utah's history, we have a vault with documents that have Brigham Young's original signature and a lot of other historical things that are stored in our vaults that are fantastic and very interesting. Right now, may not be the best time for a tour, but hopefully in the future, for those of you who are interested, we've got a lot of important documents that we have on file in our vault. Oh, and mining claims too, a lot of really cool things. I have talked to my mom and dad about it, and unfortunately, now with the pandemic, it's not really a good time, but at some point, there will be a time where if you wanted a tour, we would love to have you come when we're not in these challenging times. But I do want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. And is there anyone that has any questions? Are any of you subscribed to Property Watch? Have any of you? No? You are now?
When I got the notice of your thing, I did sign up for it.
Was it pretty easy, Piper?
Very easy.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
Well, good, because I'm going to do it next, and so it has to be easy.
Okay, good, Josh. Yes.
So I have to look up documents quite frequently, and Salt Lake County you can't just look up stuff online like in some of the other counties. And I was wondering if you guys were considering changing that. You have to have a subscription.
We do.
So I would just put in a plug to allow, or even just let people get a couple of because then you can just check on your stuff also besides the property watch, but it would be very useful.
I hear what you're saying. We're looking at options for the public to be able to do that, maybe some type of, you know, when you're looking at an online newspaper and you have a subscription where it allows you so many free a month or something like that. We've we are looking into that, and that is feedback that we have gotten. So we are looking into that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Polly. That's a good question.
Well, I think we can put this, we can put a link to your site on our on our news on our site. I think that would be a good thing and let our people in our community who aren't watching this meeting know about this.
That would be wonderful, Mayor. I'd really appreciate it. I think it's a wonderful free service for Salt Lake County residents to take advantage of. So I'd really appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
It can be commercial property too, just out of curiosity, or is it just residential?
It can be commercial property as well.
Yeah, anything with a property with the number, the parcel number, right?
Yeah, if you give us the address, it will automatically populate the parcel number that's tied to it. Yeah. We have a goal of reaching, I'll just let you know, we're having a, we're close to 7,000. So we have a goal of hitting 7,000 hopefully this week. So as many people as you can help us reach that goal, that would be much appreciated.
Okay.
Thanks for all you do for the Town of Alta too. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good question. Thanks for your good, good information and all the community outreach that you're doing.
Thank you.
Is it, do you record all property sales in Elta? And is it accurate that we can't see what property sells for? It's not public information?
Yes, yes.
Why is that?
So the sale of property, how much a house sells for? That is, that is, that is not something that's public information. And it's because of the state law. I know that it's come up at the legislature before, and that might be something that changes, but currently, right now, that's not public information.
But the recorder's office sees it.
Yeah, we know what's recorded for the mortgage, but the sell price isn't something that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Nor the assessor's office. That's something that the assessor's office gets asked quite a, I'm sure that's a commonly asked question for the assessor's office. Nor do they have that information. So it's a state law. And it's something that, yeah, yeah.
So the recorder is not not the right audience for that particular issue, I guess.
No, Utah state law does not make public that information. But the Realtors Association could give you that information if you were to ask about a property or a nosy neighbor. My husband's one of those neighbors. That's why I bring it up. He always knows what people's houses go for because he asks them.
Margaret, I think you want to pose a question or a comment?
Yeah. Yes. I just wondered, the materials we got suggested that this was to handle title fraud was kind of the primary motive for it. And I, I'm not sure that that's I don't know how much title fraud occurs and how this prevents it. It sounds more like it's just knowledge that there is a recordation of a document that you've already looked at for accuracy before it's recorded. So can you address that question?
I I believe Property Watch may help with reducing title fraud because you're notified of it. We had a mailer come in where people were coming in person to the government center, and it looked like it was something official from the county recorder's office asking for $95, and then you would get information about your property that you could get from the county recorder's office for $5. And there are vendors who pry on prey on people, especially vulnerable communities, giving them and from giving them these kinds of mailers with seals and things like that, making them think that they have to pay $95 to get property information. I believe that if you subscribe to Property Watch and you've got communication coming directly from your county recorder's office, I believe that you're probably going to be less likely to send in $95 for information that you could get from your recorder's office. And really, the power of Property Watch is acknowledging, is informing you. You know immediately if there's been a lien filed on your property, for instance. You'll get notification of that. And so anything recorded on your property, subscribers to Property Watch would get notification of. And I, it's my hope that that will help deter against title fraud.
And other than Property Watch, one would have to come into the county recorder and search the title for your parcel?
Yes, that's correct. Or call. But at the same time, these are things we don't want, as I mentioned before. That's not the time that you want to find out, you know, at the time of a sell that you have a lien on your property. So subscribers to Property Watch will be notified of that. And there lies, there lies the, there lies the power of Property Watch is being informed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you posting it on your website. I appreciate the support.
Hey, have a good, have a good evening.
Thank you, Town of Alta.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to hear from Josh Van Dura from UDOT about the EIS for Little Cottonwood Canyon and the Transportation Alternatives Report. How are you doing, Josh? Good to see you.
Good to see you too, and thank you. I'm I'm glad I logged in when I did. I literally logged in about four seconds.
I saw you pop up. We were unusually slightly ahead of schedule, and I was about to improvise, but now we can go to you directly. I do have this, your presentation, and you can let me know when you're ready for me to share that. And I will do so, and then you can tell me how to.
Sure, if you want to bring it up, that'd be great.
All right. Do you want to say something about your role with UDOT?
Absolutely. So my name is Josh Van Dura. I am the project manager for UDOT. And we should have two other individuals that'll be joining here shortly if they're not already here. I want to make sure I introduce them. Bree Benneboos is our communications manager. I'm sure you've all met her over the course of this project. And also joining will be Vince Izzo, who is the consultant PM. And depending on what questions we have, I may ask them to chime in.
Okay, I see, I saw Vince. Hello, Vince. I don't see Bree yet.
I saw Bree earlier.
She accidentally joined at 3:30 for a minute.
Okay, so she'll be back at
She'll be here in a minute. Let's get going. No worries.
All right. So you can see this document now?
Yep.
Good.
So if we just want to go to the next slide, that's kind of just the cover slide. So if there's one group that knows the limits of SR210, I would guess it's this group. Obviously, SR210 starts at the mouth of Big and runs up through the Town of Alta. And that's the study area that we're looking at in the EIS. The other thing that I'm sure you're all aware of is the traffic problems that the canyon experiences on powder days. But it's not just powder days, right? It can be a sunny Saturday on President's Day or over Christmas break. So there's a lot of days a year where the canyon is simply over capacity and people can't get up the canyon to go skiing, go hiking, just spend time with their family. So traffic modeling suggests that in the design year of 2050, that travel times up the canyon are going to regularly reach the 80 to 85 minute range. That's a really long time to get up the canyon, and that's just simply not palatable. So that's our goal. If you'd go to the next slide, please. Our goal is to substantially improve the safety, reliability and mobility from the start of SR210 at the mouth of Big up through the Town of Alta. So like I said, everybody's aware of those mobility issues that the canyon experiences on busy ski days. I want to point out that Wasatch has a slightly different mobility problem, and that's more related to the PMP commute, people going home on Wasatch. So there are two different mobility problems that we're looking to solve here. The second part of that is reliability, and reliability defined as UDOT defines it is the degree of certainty and predictability. Right? So if it takes you 30 minutes to get up to Alta, it should always take you 30 minutes to get up to Alta. But I think we all recognize that avalanche closures significantly change our travel time. So that's the main focus of that reliability component. And then safety is very much related to reducing the avalanche hazard index, but it's also related to roadside parking. So back last April, you know, a year and change ago, we had a public comment period. And at that time, there was 105 different alternatives that were proposed. So we took those 105, compared them against our purpose and need, put them through the level one and level two screening criteria, and that's where we got down to the three reasonable alternatives that we're proposing today. So next slide, please. And as you're probably aware, those three reasonable alternatives are enhanced bus, enhanced bus with peak period shoulder lanes, and then the gondola. So if you'll go to the next slide, we can talk about each of these individually. So the first option is enhanced bus. This would include the common component of a mobility hub at the gravel pit and another one at the existing UTA park and ride at 94th and Highland. It would include widening of Wasatch, including bus priority. The kind of the differentiator between this and the next one is this option, there would be no widening in the canyon. So from essentially the High T at Lakai up through the bypass road, there would be no widening. And the key transit service in this option is there would be 24 bus departures per hour. So if you split those equally between the two mobility hubs, that gives you 12 departures per hour. So essentially, there would be a bus going, leaving the mobility hub every five minutes and either going directly to Alta or directly to Snowbird. And important to note is that would actually be direct to service. So the bus heading up to Alta would not stop at Snowbird. The bus going to Snowbird would not stop at Alta. Nor would they stop at Back Country Trailheads along the way or bus stops on Wasatch. And that's really needed to decrease the travel time and increase the efficiency of the system to make that user experience better. So let's go ahead one slide and talk about the enhanced bus service with widening. So very similar to the previous one, two mobility hubs, same roadway widening. But in this situation, there would be essentially a shoulder added from the Lakai Light up through the bypass road. And this would be an 11-foot wide shoulder that would be available for buses to use at those peak times and actually bypass private vehicles that are stuck in traffic. Same direct service. The other benefit this brings, and while it's not a goal of the project, I think it's worth mentioning. Certainly, you're familiar with how many cyclists use the canyon. And there's actually a large amount of pedestrians in the canyon too, much more than I was aware of. But this additional widening would provide safety, not just for motorists by giving a shoulder, but also for those cyclists and pedestrians. So let's talk about the third option, which is the gondola. I just want to emphasize something here. You'll see there's a single mobility hub at the gravel pit. Same roadway widening on Wasatch in the base of the gondola would be located at the existing park and ride. And as I'm sure many of you are aware, there would be no parking at that gondola base station. So users would have to board a bus at the mobility hub. That bus would take them to the existing park and ride and the base station. They'd then board the gondola, travel up, disembark at Snowbird or disembark at Alta. So let's look at these three on the next slide, kind of next, you know, in relation to each other. And I think this is the easiest way to see it. That first column is the proposed transit constant, travel time. And this is what we've been calling seat time. This is how long it would take somebody to get from the mobility hub up to Alta. So under the enhanced bus option, it would take a transit user 54 minutes. By comparison, it would take a private vehicle 42 minutes in this situation. And that extra 12 minutes is really the time it takes to enter the mobility hub, park, grab their gear, walk over to the bus stop, wait up to five minutes, and then essentially that same 42 minutes starts because the bus would enter traffic. The second option, the enhanced bus with peak period shoulder lanes. This is, has a 36-minute transit time. And this is actually the only option where transit's faster than a private vehicle, where a private vehicle would be 38 minutes in this situation. And that's really because they have the option of using that peak period shoulder lane and pass all the private And that's really because they have the option of using that peak period shoulder lane and pass all the private vehicles that are queuing. The third option, the gondola is a seat time of 63 minutes. That's that same 12 minutes to, you know, mobility hub, board the bus. But the extra time here is really the fact that gondolas just don't go as fast as buses do. We've estimated them at 17 miles an hour. Full speed, I've heard 19 miles an hour, but that doesn't account for loading and unloading and going through the angle station. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that the additional travel time is partly just because gondolas don't travel as fast as a bus or a private vehicle. Cost wise, the enhanced bus has a capital cost of 283 million with an O and M of 9 million. The enhanced bus with widening is a capital cost of 470 million with an operation and maintenance cost of 6.2 million. And the gondola is right in the middle capital cost wise at 393 million with O and M at 4.5 million. Another point here is those O and M costs represent winter service only. The same timeframe that the buses run now, essentially Thanksgiving through middle of April. We recognize that the gondola would have or may have some tourism opportunities. So we're asking for public comment as to whether we should analyze summer gondola usage in the EIS. So if you feel strongly about that, please provide comments about that. And also any restrictions that you think that are appropriate for that summer service. Hours of operation, whether a mountain bike should be allowed on the bus, things of that nature. So that's what we're really looking for. Next slide, please. So there's five components of these reasonable alternatives. We talked about the mobility hub in each of the three options. Widening of Wasatch would apply to all three options. Snowsheds would only apply to the two bus options as they're currently priced. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then we are looking at three different trailhead parking options. I can go into more detail there, but it's a bit complicated and I want to be respectful of everybody's time. And then the other one is the discussion regarding elimination of winter roadside parking adjacent to the ski resorts. So right now above entry one, there's roughly 900 spots. Of course, just uphill from Lady of the Snows, there's kind of those island parking and people park perpendicular to the travelway in that. There's all the spots up by Grizzly Gulch. Those aren't the spots we're talking about. The 230 spots that we're talking about potentially removing are essentially those spots where you're parking parallel to the lane of traffic. And we've all seen people park either on the white line or over the white line. And this is a problem, one, because all the people that get out of their car now become pedestrians. Right? They're parking there because they're trying to get to somewhere. So they often walk in the lane of travel, slowing down mobility. Of course, those cars affect our plowing operations. And then at the end of the day, they got to get out of the canyon. And rather than driving up to make a U-turn, they try and make a K-turn in the middle of the road. So I'm sure you've all seen this dozens of times on a busy Saturday. So that's really the mobility problem there. So next slide, please. So process where we're at, we're in that blue arrow right in the middle. We held our public meetings. I hope you had an opportunity to attend. We're also coming to the end of our 35 day public comment period. I'll add that that ends at 11:59 on Friday, 11:59 PM Friday night. So we're getting awfully close to the end of that comment period. Moving forward, we'll obviously read all of those comments. At this point, we've had over 5,000 comments, which is fantastic. I couldn't be happier that we've gotten that many comments and there's so many people passionate about these alternatives. And we really want to know what from both agencies and private citizens' perspectives, what we did well, what we didn't do well, what we might have missed, what needs some tweaking. Because it's really that public input that drives the decision-making process. So I couldn't be happier with 5,000 comments. And I hope we get more because again, it just adds value to the process. Moving forward, we're hoping to have a draft EIS out next spring, at which point we'll have a public hearing. And there'll be another 45 day public comment period. And then we hope to have a final EIS and a record of decision at the end of 2021. So next slide, please. Again, this is just the overview of the comments. Again, remind everybody it ends on July 10th at 11:59 PM, just to be clear, because we've gotten that question a couple of times. You know, when on July 10? So 11:59 PM, please submit anything that you think we did well, we missed, anything like that, we absolutely want to hear. And if anybody has any questions, I can stay for as much time as you want to ask questions.
Thank you for this presentation. I have a question.
Please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So did you determine an upper limit of human capacity? And if you did, how did you come to that determination for Little Cottonwood Canyon?
No, we did not look at a capacity carrying analysis. That's really under the purview of the Forest Service. And the thought process was is because we're getting all of these users to the two developed sites in Snowbird and Alta, that it's really the management of their forest service permit that's a different permitting process. So carrying capacity was not required. Did that answer your question?
Sort of. You must have run numbers though on how much traffic and gondola delivery of human beings could reach both Snowbird and Alta. So how did you run those numbers?
So what we, we actually kind of looked at it from the opposite side. And so we took growth projections for our 30-year planning horizon and backtracked into by traffic modeling how to get that mobility goal and what percentage of people needed to ride the transit alternative. And then looked for transit alternatives that got the mobility goal both in the canyon, on Wasatch, and that includes queuing. So we kind of looked at it from the opposite side, if that makes sense.
So if I can, if I can follow up on what you just said in response to Sheridan, that, the way you just put that, demand is exogenous to supply of the capacity in the bus. However, if you increase the supply of seats in the bus, isn't that going to increase demand? So that there's going to be a reflective social process here.
And Vince, are you there to help with that answer?
Yeah, I am. So if, we tried to solve the 30th busy day, which is kind of a national guideline for solving traffic problems. So if we look at today, that's about close to 1,200 vehicles in one hour going up the canyon in that 30 busiest hour. If we take traffic projections that, you know, we look back about 10 years and.
I'm sorry Vince, can I, I just, can you explain what you mean by the 30th day? I'm not sure everybody understands that. I don't think I understand what you mean.
Yeah, so we look at the, all, we looked at all the traffic from the busiest day to the 50th busiest day going up Little Cottonwood Canyon.
During a year or ever?
During the year, during the year. Now, I can't tell you the exact number, but about 95% of those between the busiest to the 50th busiest hour are in the wintertime for Little Cottonwood Canyon. And we took of all those hours based on national guidance, we said, okay, we're going to try to solve for the 30th busiest hour. Because you don't want to solve for the busiest hour because it only happens once. And so you try to solve for most of the problem. So we took that 30th busiest hour, which in 2020s roughly around 1,200 vehicles. And then we took the traffic growth projection and said in 2050, that number will get up to around 1,500 vehicles in an hour. And so that was the traffic problem we tried to solve was that 1,500 vehicles, which so we built a bus system and a road system for basically handling that load of people. Because that's what in the future is expected to happen.
So, so the bus is supposed to take care of the marginal increase from the status quo? Or, or you're talking about all of those 1,500 people now being on the bus?
No. So what we did is we said, okay, we want to reduce congestion or, actually go over, we wanted to improve mobility on SR210. And we looked at that problem and we said, if we can get about 30% of the vehicles associated with those 1,500 users or 1,500 vehicles, if we can get 30% of those off the road, the road will operate fairly well. Not perfect. We can't ever get it to run perfect. But it'll operate fairly well. So what we tried to do is get out of that 1,500 vehicles, 30% of those off the road, which roughly is about a 30th busiest day today. So it's roughly around 1,100 to 1,200 vehicles. So we get about 300 to 400 vehicles in that peak hour off the road. Does that make sense, using the bus?
So congestion, the number now is about 1,200?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah. So what you're projecting to do is to maintain the status quo despite the, the growth in demand. And you have, and I can understand why you picked the 30th day. But I don't, let me try and say my question to Josh again, because I don't, I didn't hear you address that. Let me put it another way. If you build it, they will come. And so you're, you could actually be increasing the demand over the projected increase from, that you've, over the increase you projected today without an improved transit system. In other words, you're assuming that there's no effect of having an improved bus system on the growth from 1,200 to 1,500.
Essentially, yeah, right. I mean, I don't disagree with that statement. I don't know how you can model that, I would say. Right? Or how, because you kind of end up chasing your tail under that theory, right?
Well.
I mean, parking will always be a finite number in the canyon. Right?
By, by saying that you're, so these are two different ways of saying the same things. What I was saying is that I'm not sure that the assumption that demand is exogenous to the supply is the same thing as you saying you're chasing your tail if you build it into the model. And I, I agree with that. I just am not, but, but we know, we know that when you build a new airport, you get more flights into that airport, not just, right? You, you, you don't get the same growth pattern. You get to step up. There's a, there's a, there's a, it's not linear. You get, either you get a steeper curve or you actually get a step. And, and so you, you aren't including that. Now Sheridan didn't put it this way, but I, I'm guessing, Sheridan, please tell me if I'm wrong, that she's concerned not just about the projected growth, but the actual acceleration of the growth as a result of this improvement. And when you say all of the growth is going to go to the ski area, that just doesn't seem plausible. We have, we have our ski area telling us that there's a lot of growth in backcountry skiing. You, you can't keep those people off the bus. Or out of the gondola and they are not necessarily going to be customers of the ski area. They might be, but they might not be.
Um, can I, so at this, the, the bus capacity is a, is a limited resource. In other words, we can only run so many buses and that is about, that's the 24 per hour, yes, working with UTA, that's as many buses as we get. So we can't add more buses to get more people. Eventually the system breaks down. So that's a limited number of people and that's built into our analysis. And then the question becomes, well, now you're making the road operate more free flow conditions. It doesn't work perfectly, more free flow. So now more cars come up. And that's, that's why the tolling comes in, right? We would start adjusting the price of the toll to, to, so we don't get that congestion. So if we find a $20, for example, that the toll rate, all suddenly we're getting 1,400 cars and the system's failing. Well, obviously our toll isn't high enough, but we're not getting enough people shifting over to the buses. So we're going to raise that toll up to $40. And now we've, our goal is to keep that traffic from getting backed up into the neighborhoods and things down at the bottom. So we would use that toll rate to limit, keep that vehicle count down and get the people into the transit, which is a fixed number. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I don't mean to be difficult, but you're, the way you just framed that, I think your buses are full and your highway now has to take more congestion and, and you're saying that you can price people out and, you know, then you're getting into all kinds of issues of, I didn't see pricing in this presentation that, I'm not, I'm not saying that it isn't considered in the EIS, but it wasn't in the presentation that I noticed. And there are many issues with a $40 toll to come up Little Cottonwood Canyon, it seems to me.
So I would add, and that's just because in the shortened version, you know, the department hasn't decided on a strategy. So tolling is one of, one strategy. Another strategy is potentially eliminating single occupancy vehicles. And those numbers, we haven't decided on the appropriate number, but I think it's important to think of it as a dial. Right? It probably wouldn't be set. It would go up and down based on demand. Um, the other part of that is there is the component of, you know, potentially we don't toll the lower canyon. So if there's a viable transit alternative that's subsidized up to the resorts, we want people to take that. So maybe only the upper canyon is told. So if you want to go ski Tanner's or whatever, you know, maybe that isn't told. So I mean, those are some of the considerations. I just want to point that those tolling or occupancy restrictions haven't been decided. Those are just some considerations, but you're right. It's, it's important to maintain access for everybody. Right? It's, it's a national forest. It's not a national forest for people that can afford a toll.
Okay, so it's five to, five or a few minutes over what we had put on the agenda for this, but I don't want to not let the town council, the other town council members weigh in. So I'd suggest taking another five minutes or so if Margaret, Cliff and Elise have comments. Since Sheridan and I took some, some of the time. Especially me. Margaret, I see that you're unmuted yourself. And so have you Cliff, either one of you? Cliff?
No, I don't.
Okay. Margaret?
Yeah, I guess part of this was discussed earlier in, in both your comment and Sheridan's in terms of capacity. And yet my notes, when you started talking, Josh, was that we have traffic problems because there's an overcapacity. That's the verbiage that I actually wrote down from your. Uh, that's the verbiage that I actually wrote down from your discussion as, as we were beginning this presentation. And I think as the mayor pointed out, you build it, they will come. And yet there is a finite, um, terminus for all of this. And so to work at maintaining mobility where the dispersment is, um, not going to change, there's, there's no increase in the acreage that's available. Um, I, I understand that it's for the Forest Service to decide capacity, but it seems to me as a mobility exercise, one has to consider capacity and whether or not it makes sense to have an unlimited uh, number and planning to 2050 is a good horizon, but where are we going to be in 2051? I mean, as, as the mayor talked about this uh, number and the increase and trying to move people, um, I'm not sure it's really a long-term solution. It's, I guess. My, my comment, I don't know if that's a question or not.
Yeah, I just want to, I, I think you understand that when I was talking about capacity, I was talking about the capacity of the roadway. Right? Uh, but the asphalt section, not of the larger area, just to make sure that there isn't any confusion there. But again, like Vince mentioned, the 30-year planning horizon is a standard planning horizon. Um, but you're right, things will change. We don't, we don't even know what it is, but something will change. But again, that 30 years is kind of standard, so something might need to be done in 2051, you're right. Or something might change the other way that doesn't. So that's kind of why the standard 30-year planning horizon.
Um, I, I guess, uh, part of it as well is, as you talk about the roadway capacity, um, again, the terminus at both ends, excuse me, the, the bus and or parking uh, at both ends is critical, um, both at the uh, base facility where the mobility hub is and at the destination. There has to be adequate capacity for, uh, people to embark and disembark from whatever mode they use to get to each location. And I don't know if that, uh, is a consideration of yours of, in, in this study.
Yeah, again, our, our goal is not to put more people in the canyon. Our goal is to make the roadway and travel to the canyon reasonable.
Thank you.
All right, well, um, we appreciate you coming to talk to us, um, all three of you and, um, I suspect you'll get some comments if you haven't already out of this body and, uh, Unity, I'm sure you'll get, I don't. There, there may be, there were some people who I can imagine have sent in multiple comments of the probably not all 5,000.
No, we've had every word from one line comments to literally they've used more characters than our system will handle and it's become two comments because their comment is so long. And that's great. The more details, the better we can understand their concerns. So much welcomed and appreciate the time and the questions. And if there's anything we can do to help, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got you early and kept you late. Thanks a lot. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is the Alta Ski Area update. And Mike Mon is here to share his thoughts with us.
Thank you. Um, as you know, we're up and running for the summer. Uh, the fee booth is up and seems to be working well. Campground is, is open. Just walk in or people that show up that are staying there. I think reservations, uh, we moved them up a week. They start this weekend and I think they told me that not this weekend, but from the next weekend on, they're full almost every night. Our little campground store is, is up and running and, uh, I checked with them today. They said that, they said they've sold more t-shirts and hats than they have uh, other items. So it's, that's kind of was a little bit of a surprise. Everybody wants to buy a t-shirt or a hat more than anything else. And, uh, we're, you know, we're following CDC guidelines in our, at the fee booth at, and wherever we need to, to to try to keep our employees as well as the public from spreading the virus. You may have noticed also our parking lot project, Albion Parking Lot Project's coming along well. Um, we're pretty much done moving the dirt. We're uh, pouring a gutter on the north side right now today, hoping to do some paving next week. Uh, but we, our sunny side pitch work, Sunset Pitch One work is now completed except for the revegetation work and putting the trail back into place. And we've moved, we've moved our heavy equipment up to the Devil's Castle Road. And, uh, we'll be working on a project up there of taking some of the slope out of the road from the, adding some slope at the, near the top of Supreme and taking some slope at the bottom of the, of the road and making it a little wider. Uh, it's kind of the project for the remainder of the summer up there. Winter Ops, still not a lot of clarity as to what that's going to look like at this point in time. I'm on a conference call tomorrow with, uh, the Mountain Collective Partners in the Southern Hemisphere from New Zealand to South America as well as uh, ski areas such as Mount Bachelor that are open for the summer. And we're going to talk about what's working, what's not working, uh, where we think it's going. Um, but you know, we were just figuring it out today. We, uh, we're still not at the midpoint between when we close and when we will open again. About four months have gone since we closed and we're still four and a half less months away from when we would reopen. So lots happened in that period of time and the sand seems to continually be shifting. Uh, but we anticipate probably within the next, probably about 30 days from now or five weeks from now that we are we're going to have to start making some plans. We are actively collecting all the information we can from a lot of different sources. Uh, and so that we, and doing a little analysis so we can start to make some decisions related to the winter. We are still on the at this point in time, we're still planning to open and we're trying to work in that direction and just, uh, uh, we will start doing so, those some analysis of what that opening will look at, like I said, in about 30 days. We, uh, we did have, I did want to report to the town of Alta that, uh, the Forest Service, uh, uh, we've been working with the Forest Service and they have finally confirmed in, in officially in letter form that all of the parking areas within Alta Ski Areas, a special use permit are assets of the ski area. Uh, and as such, we have the right to restrict parking within them whenever it interferes with our permitted purposes. Uh, which was a little bit of a change from where we were at before when anyone could just park there at any time. We had a, a meeting with the backcountry community, you know, a week or two ago and and discussed that and, and pointed out to them that, you know, we, we now need to use, uh, our parking that we developed and plow and maintain. Uh, and that there is really no or very limited public parking within the town of Alta or the non-ski area patron visitor. And we'd like to find some solutions to address that. Some of the options we discussed with them were one is we could just, we could just shut it down. We could close our private lands that couldn't be used and we could close the parking to just out the ski area patrons. I don't think that's the right answer, the thing that anyone would want us to do. Another option we looked at was do we just create a backcountry skier out of everything on the north side of the canyon? Develop parking areas and restrooms and people pay to go. That's somewhat problematic. It, you know, there's a lot to that. Um, so the other two, we, we looked at two other less uh, probably better options. And, and those options were one is that the Forest Service allow, works with partners uh, such as the backcountry community or others to develop a backcountry parking lot, maybe above the town of Alta and with restrooms that, uh, the backcountry community could come and park. It could be, and we offer as a skewer that we would help to plow that and keep that, uh, open that way. Um, that was one option. Uh, it had the advantage of the lot being independent of the ski area and primarily used by the backcountry community. It's hard to find a location that works for all of the backcountry users, uh, in that scenario. The other option we had discussed was allowing Alta Ski Area to expand the parking between the Alta Lodge and the Rustler to put 150 spots maybe in there. It would be across from the future Alta Community Center, which would also be possibly the site of the Transit Hub if UTA goes in that direction and also near the landing site of any proposed gondola. Uh, that seemed to have some merit. We have thrown those two cons, those last two concepts have been uh, given to the, the backcountry community, Wasatch Backcountry Alliance and said, we'd like to, your input, we'd like to know which of these you would rather go proceed with. Cause we, we can, as a ski area, I think we could proceed with either of those and support either of those directions. And so I kind of just shared that too with the town. Um, there were representatives from the town involved in that meeting. But we'd like your input too as to, you know, if there's one way or another, we should try to lean and to try to move forward. We recognize this is really just a short-term solution. A way to kind of get us through the short term until a longer-term solution with UDOT can be put into play. Um, it helps us to deal with the, the bleeding that happens now. Um, it was the last two seasons, we did, uh, we've, we've calculated that we've lost maybe a quarter million dollars uh, in revenue to the days when our parking wasn't available and consumed by non-sky area patrons. So it's, it's something that we need to address. Like to do it in a way that supports both uh, backcountry, non-sky area patron use and, and allows us also to accommodate and, and the skiers that are, they're coming that we've built the facilities for. And then the last thing is just on, uh, UDOT EIS, um, you may have seen, we put out, I put out a little, uh, uh, letter to our pass holders encouraging them to be engaged in the process and indicating that as a ski area, we had looked at the three, I've read all 400 pages of their detailed report, looked at all the alternatives. I don't think any of them are perfect at this point in time. They all need some refinement. Uh, but of the ones that are presented, uh, we are, as Snowbird, we are supportive of the gondola option with some modifications. Um, we, as Sheridan pointed out, 1,000 people per hour is not, uh, not very good. Um, we would like to see, you know, that gondola can run about 5,000 people per hour, but you've got to be able to get people on and off it. We are supportive of a gondola solution that would have some parking at its base as well as the hubs feeding it so that they the capacity of the gondola could be more appropriately used. We like the gondola option also because it addresses our, having additional way to do ingress and egress in, and out of the town of Alta when there's an issue on the road. And we're still active proponents of asking UDOT to put that traction device law into effect. November 1st, April 30th, you've got to have the right tires or four-wheel drive. And let's get the, the, the cars out of the canyon that don't have the proper tires, uh, during, during our winter period of time. We think that, that would have the most significant impact in the short term upon congestion in Little Cotton Canyon. That's kind of our update from our end. Uh, any questions from the town? What's going on at the Ski Lift Company?
Council members?
I, I had a question, uh, Mike, or a comment, uh, as well. And that is that it seems like the summer road is very well, uh, graded and the deaths of present seem to be very effective. Um, and I wanted to thank you for that. And also thank you for your, uh, efforts in the backcountry rescues that have occurred, uh, this summer with people skiing. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the road, because of moving the heavy equipment up to the area that you're talking about, it seems like the, uh, track vehicles are creating the washboarding that develops over the summer. So even though we're only a week or so into the summer road, the washboarding is developing along the areas where I've seen the, the, uh, track vehicles operating. And then the last thing had to do with the parking in the Albion Base. Um, is it going to be increased parking there this year as a result of the, um, removing of the dirt and, uh, reshaping that parking area?
Increased parking in the winter or the summer? What are you referring to?
Yes.
Both? Yes, that, that the intent of that project is to increase the parking there at the base. Yes. So it, it will add about, I, I think we calculated close to 40 parking spots would be there at the Albion Base. You know, this, this parking lot project was approved in our EIS a number of years ago, uh, to help us to replace, uh, the parking that we had, uh, displaced by accommodating public transportation for buses and bus turnarounds and and making it the buses could get in and out of parking areas. But that was primarily what that was, parking was, uh, to address.
Thank you.
Um, I think Elise is, uh, having to take another call. So I think that she's not, uh, available at the moment. Um, Cliff, Sheridan. Okay. Well, thank you, Mike. Um, I would be interested in talking to you about what you learned about the Southern Hemisphere, um, activities. So maybe we can, we can connect later in the week. Um, thank you. And I want to, uh, second Margaret's, uh, expression of gratitude to you about, uh, the rescues and also that goes to Mike Maury and to the UFA as well, so.
Well, yeah, thank, yeah, I think we're, we're a great team working together with the town of Alta on those issues and trying to take care of what's going on up here. So, you know, and we appreciate the help from your team. Uh, I did receive a call Harris today from Ralph Becker wanting to set up a meeting to meet with the Ski Lift Company and some members of the Central Wasatch Commission and some others to talk about land.
Okay.
Didn't know if you were in that group, but you might.
I, I, I am in that group and, uh, I declined a call from Ralph Becker about 30 minutes ago. So, um, I suspect I just, uh, wasn't at the top of his call list.
Okay.
Got to call the guy with the land first, so.
Supposed.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, the next item on our agenda, we're a little behind, but, uh, is the approval of the consent agenda is there? That is to say the minutes from the past meeting on June 17th, treasurer's report and the various staff reports, um, and would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, seconded? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Margaret and Sheridan. Okay, is there a discussion before we, uh, move to approve? Or proceed to approve?
I wondered if our marshal might want to have his characterization or the characterization of George Floyd's death, um, maybe restated? As I read it, I, I didn't think it accurately conveyed his very well-spoken message around that in making it seem like he was okay with the events that had happened around George Floyd's murder. It just, it struck my ear in reading the, the minutes as, um, open to a couple of different interpretations, which might not be his intention.
Sure. Uh, you know, my comment last month was that, uh, I believe exactly what I said is that, uh, none of us were okay with what we, uh, and the rest of the world saw, um, nor could we be.
That's, uh, you know, that's my recollection of what you said too. Uh, do you see, do you, where do you see that that's not well-characterized in the minutes, Sheridan? Can you? I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing that.
Sorry, Mayor. When I read the minutes earlier today, I saw it. But I can't look at you and look at the minutes at the same time, unfortunately.
There's the marshal's staff report, but you're talking about the minutes.
Yes.
The money, the minutes, yeah, I see, I see it now. What it says here is that one hour 38 minutes into the meeting, Mike Maury Town Marshal stated that nobody at the marshal's office was okay with the events surrounding George Floyd's death. They believed it was right for the country to be asking questions and finding answers and solutions. He said it was better to hire than talking about his own strategy, which is, I just, I just added that. But what the text says, he said it was better to hire the right kind of person and train them to be a cop than to hire a cop and train them to be the right kind of person. I believe that Mike was, was talking about this hiring strategy here in the town of Alta. He spoke of the quality of his department and the policies in place to ensure ethical behavior. Mike, do you feel like that captured the sense of what you wanted to say?
I do, thank you.
Okay, good. Alrighty. Any other comments about the consent agenda? Okay. Elise, are you back with us? Okay, so we're going to have four members voting. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Ah, just in time. Thank you, Elise. Okay, so there were five yeses, so there must be no nos. Okay, very good. I got to get back to my copy of the agenda here. Okay. Any questions for the departmental reports beyond what we've already discussed? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is.
Sorry, Harris, I muted myself. This is Margaret. I had a question for Chris about that survey. I, I'm not sure what the scale was on it, but it looked like maybe there were seven respondents and yet there were five of us about that. So a question about that and the prioritization of that. And then secondly, related to the high T at Wildcat, when that's part of something that UDOT is planning for this summer, can we, you know, in addition to just working with them as you put in the chart, is there a way that they can fund some of what we, what we want them to do as part of their work this summer?
I'll, I'll start with your second question. You know, we put this together like in April in preparation for the May council meeting and of course these kinds of projects have been tertiary at best in the last several months. And so in the meantime, we've learned that yes, in fact, the high T project has been bid. You know, a contractor is lined up and it's, the design is finalized and it's going to roll out per a design that UDOT has determined it prefers. And we have we've, I know that Mike in particular has tried to express his preference for a couple of design features to UDOT over the last year or two is that as they've left those jersey barriers in place. And it hasn't been as collaborative an effort as some of those types of projects are. So unfortunately, yeah, the, the, the short answer is that we don't really have a strong opportunity to influence the design of that. There are opportunities, there may be an opportunity to work with UDOT on a potential VMS installation at that location, at the location near the, you know, the, what I call the Wildcat driveway intersection with Highway 210. You may recall that a couple of years ago, we received a grant from Salt Lake County to build a permanent VMS sign. And UDOT has been talking about VMS sign in each resort on the highway. So that is some news that I can provide you about that project. Unfortunately, despite it scoring high, it's not in our control the way we thought it might be to some extent when we put these materials together a couple of months ago. Yeah, we did not have seven responses. We had five, but, or, yeah, I think we had five. So that's my answer to your first question.
Yeah, I was just looking at, it seemed to be the scale on the left had something above five, it had a six and approaching a seven. So it just may be the scale. So I apologize. I didn't understand it.
Yeah, and I'm a more quantitative person than I could like backtrack from these results into what, perhaps you recall what the scoring opportunities were. I think it was you can assign a five and a four and a three and a two and a one or perhaps starting with a nine, I forget.
So you're talking about this bar graph with the colors on it? So did you just, what you might have done is exceeded the end of the scale, Margaret, because he aggregated across respondents within category of project. That's my guess.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I couldn't tell. So that's, that's why I asked. Thank you.
Yeah, rather than a count, I think it's a, it's an addition of a rating, if you see what I mean.
Right.
Okay. Don't get me started on scale construction. Chris and I have gotten back and forth on that a couple of times. Okay, Jay Torgeson, Chief, UFA. Are you, yeah, there you go.
Hello.
How are you?
How are you all? Happy July. So just to review a few things for UFA, COVID update. I don't know if you saw numbers today, but we set a record today. It was not a good record, but the most confirmed cases to date so far.
So 722, I think.
Yeah. So this, this last month and June, we've been watching those numbers continuously climb and it certainly has us concerned. As far as how it's affected us operationally, we're still doing fine, as are the other fire departments that we work with in the valley. We've seen a sharp increase within the Salt Lake Valley over the last three to four weeks. If the current trend continues, Dr. Dunn, the state epidemiologist, has a high level of concern that we will overwhelm or possibly overwhelm the hospital system in the state as well as the Salt Lake Valley. So just for some data comparisons, for the weekend being May 30th, our daily average rate was 89 for the Salt Lake Valley, 181 in the state. That's hospitalizations. 89 in the Salt Lake Valley, 181 in the state. By comparison, the end of June, we had 251 in the Salt Lake Valley, 520 in the state. So we're seeing significant increases in hospitalizations as well as ICU patients. Obviously, patients that are in the ICU, some of them are on ventilators. And so that is, that's what we're watching closely is as these numbers continue to climb, if, if, if we have beds to put patients in. So as of right now, we are doing okay and the hospitals are doing okay. Hopefully, at some point, we will level off. But I think that that, you know, that's up to all of us in what we do and how we behave to, to make that possible. So it's just our continuous recommendation is trying to self-isolate, trying to maintain good social distance, trying to maintain good hygiene and just continue with those good efforts. So we're hoping that we can eventually see the, the impact of good habits in those areas. As far as UFA goes, we're, we're doing things that we've been doing over the last several months. We're careful with any kind of multi-company training. We are doing training so that, you know, we have to continue with our training. We have certain requirements that we have to do both for our medical licensure as well as our, our fire certifications. And so we're just trying to do that in a careful manner, maintaining distance from one another and not doing it in large groups that we typically would do. We don't allow any visitors in our stations and that includes family members for those that are on shift as well as those who are off shift. We're asking, you know, if you're off shift, shower, take your, your clothes with you and come back when it's your turn to be back on shift. So we're really trying to, to isolate our people. And we're really trying to take care of our people that become sick or have family members that are sick, maintaining their isolation. As soon as we find out that somebody has a family member that is sick or they may have a potential exposure, we put them off shift. And so far, our staffing is such that we are able to do that without having any kind of staffing concerns or staffing issues. But that's not the case across the country. There are departments and agencies that have, that have faced pretty significant staffing issues as their numbers increase and, and their, their staffing becomes problematic. So as to this point, we're, we're doing okay. We're hoping that we continue in that, in that path. Fourth of July, hopefully the Fourth of July was nice for you all. I, I hope that it was quiet up in the town of Alta. It certainly was not quiet around my house and in the Salt Lake Valley. It sounded like a war zone. Leading up to the Fourth of July and around the Fourth of July, it was, it was busy. We saw a 40% increase in medical and fire-related calls over that Fourth of July weekend. You know, hot temperatures, low humidities, a lot of wind. Prior to the Fourth, we, we had a couple of big fires, the south end of the valley and the north end of Utah County that we were involved with. So, you know, we're, we're just continuing to remind people to be extremely careful with fireworks. We've had several PSAs that we've been involved with trying to encourage people to use them appropriately and only in areas where they, they, they are allowed. And you all are lucky up there that, that they're not allowed up there. So hopefully that was the case and you didn't have any issues with people up in the canyon. I don't know if you saw any of our social media related to fireworks safety, but we had a star, a former resident from the town of Alta, former patroler that starred in several of our Instagram posts fire safety and fireworks safety. It's the old Matt McFarland, played, played a character named Daryl and did a great job. You can look on our Instagram page and, and review those. He was a hit. He's saying that he will never do it again, but I think that there's going to be a demand for him to continue with those efforts. Our Wildland Fire Crew has been busy, not only with fires around the Salt Lake area, but we do have crews that are equalized as a national resource. So our Type One Hand Crew, they are in Hot Shot Crew, which is, it's been long in coming and it's, it's something that I, I think will be successful and it should be a great benefit to UFA. So as part of that, they will spend the next year in a, in a kind of a, a training status. And so their assignments that they will be doing over the next summer will be, they will be getting favorable assignments in order for them to be tested and to gain experience in certain areas to obtain that hot shot status. So this year, they've, they've been working around the Salt Lake area and around the state of Utah, as well as Arizona and New Mexico. So they've been extremely busy so far. And that is something that UFA bills for and is reimbursed when that crew is utilized on any of those fires that are outside of the UFA area. We also have two Wildland Fire Engines that are set up in a similar manner. They are, they're managed by full-time UFA employees and we hire seasonal employees to round out the staffing on those. And, you know, they have also been busy, mostly in the state of Utah. They went out of state once to Nevada. And then our Fuels Crew is the crew that is utilized for fuel mitigation. And they've been working hard when they have not been on fires, but that, that's one of the benefits is when they, they are here, they do not leave the Salt Lake area. They are here, they are available to do that fuels mitigation. And then if there is a fire, they are all certified Wildland firefighters. And so they're able to be utilized as an asset in the UFA areas for any kind of fire that pops up in our area. We have started what we call our strategic plan update. So this was something that we did four years ago for the first time. It was to, it was mostly to identify areas where, where we're doing really well, areas where maybe we need to improve. So just evaluating our strengths, our weaknesses and, and looking at where our stakeholders wanted us to go. So that is something that we're, it's, it's been four years since that, that was done last. And so evaluating where we are now and putting together a plan on where we want to be four years from now. So for you all, as part of that process, we look to our stakeholders to find out what is important for you as a town, also for businesses that are around your town. So we will be reaching out probably through, through the mayor and the council to identify if there's somebody from the town that would like to be involved in that process as well as any of the other stakeholders. So maybe Alta Ski Lifts. If there's anyone that would be interested in, in being involved with that, we'll be reaching out in the coming weeks to solicit your involvement. That, as far as stuff with UFA, that is about it. It's been call volume wise for the town of Alta fairly slow. The month of June, there were three calls and so far in the month of July, there have been two. And I know Mike Monn mentioned it and I think Mike Maury mentioned the, the rescue calls. And so just wanted to thank Mike Maury and his crew, as well as the Alta Ski Lifts for just their help. I think it's, when we have calls in the canyon, it seems, it seems like we all work really well together and we we know one another. And so just wanted to say thanks for the, the help on, on all of those calls. Any questions from me or anything I can follow up on for you all?
I wanted to ask you a question and make an observation. Jay, how are you guys doing on PPE? I've been reading that they are becoming hard to obtain again.
Right now, our, our logistics division chief is reporting that we are doing fine. And with, with what we are using, projections will, will keep us in that realm that we'll be fine. If, if we see a significant increase in the use of our PPE, then, then that could change. But he is continuously utilizing his staff to, to make sure that we, when purchasing is available, that we are purchasing in a way that, that won't lead to waste, but that will, that will allow us to be prepared. So he feels comfortable with where, where we are right now. Mostly, it's, it's all the PPE, gowns, gloves, masks, eye protection, those sorts of things. There are certain items that we utilize on patients that there's not shortages necessarily because of COVID. But, I mean, you've probably heard for years, there's certain medications that, that are difficult to obtain for whatever reason. And they are very common medications. And you would think that, that they would be manufactured by a drug company and would be really easy to get. But there are certain medications that are just significantly, they're difficult to get. And so we keep an eye on all of those and, and get a little nervous at times that we get close to, to the point where we wonder what we're going to do. But to this point, we, we've been okay. And I think we're, we're doing just fine in those areas.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. And the other, the comment I wanted to make is that I would imagine that this inability to have family members or off-duty personnel show up at the station. I hope it's not affecting collegiality too much. I know that, you know, typically I would see my colleagues at the I know that, you know, typically I would see my colleagues at the university frequently, whether socially or in the hallway. And it seems to go a long way to helping people work well together if you can do that. So I'm just expressing my empathy on that dimension.
Yeah, I think that our crews are feeling a little bit of that. On the holidays, it's typical more for us to have family members over and barbecue with families. But I think, you know, we've all adjusted and we understand what the issue is. We understand the importance of not doing that. The crew that you work with is still, it's kind of a family unit. It is a family unit. It's the people that you're working with. You are cooking and cleaning and eating with all of them. And you're working side by side for forty-eight hours at a time. And so we still have that family unit intact. And you see the next crew that comes on at shift change and there's a brief discussion, a brief pass-on of what had happened previously and any information that needs to get passed on. So it's still occurring, but just not to the extent that used to. It is different.
Well, thank you for your hard work. And I know that those fires in the south end of the valley were kind of a big deal. I was listening to some of that. And, you know, this whole issue of how well people work together in the canyon, just even today, there was a couple of kids who, I think that they just got separated from their parents is what that sounded like to me, Mike. But, you know, the Alta Police Marshal's Office was working hand in glove with the UPD to get those kids found. And if they hadn't been, I bet UFA would have, or if they'd been hurt, UFA would have been involved too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I've got two minutes and I can get us back on schedule if I have a quick mayor's report. But I'll probably not be quite there. But, so COVID is still the main issue affecting our community in so many ways. I think everybody is aware that there's an updated mask-wearing rules in Salt Lake County and Summit County also. And Grand County, I think, also has those rules. In any case, in Salt Lake County, you have to wear a mask if you're at a public gathering, indoors or out, where consistent social distancing is not possible. And while waiting outside or inside retail and other public locations, including bars and restaurants until you're seated. I just wanted to read those rules so that they, everybody knew. CARES Act funding has been received, a little bit more than eleven thousand dollars. I've been in discussion, in that same conversation, where we were offered some consulting services from the financial department, the finance department of the county. I have made the request that we have more of our reimbursable expenses reimbursed. And I think we will get more than our per capita allocation. There seems to be some indication that they're okay with that. There is a new liaison, Ryan Perry is going back to being a full-time, going back to his full-time job of running a department for the county. And the new liaison, intergovernmental liaison is Lisa Hartman. And I spent some time on the phone with her just a couple of days ago, getting acquainted, and actually posed a question. She called me about fifteen minutes ago. And I told her I couldn't take the call right now, but she was answering a question that we had for her. Because of the COVID situation, we made a conscious decision after quite a bit of discussion to not to put up the volleyball facility at the park and to keep the park closed. It just didn't seem like a good idea. I attended a conference of mayors that focused on CARES Act and COVID effects in terms of sales tax. There is an information-packed website created by the county's Economic Impact Working Group that includes tax revenue data and sales projections. So it's year-to-date. It actually goes back to 2006, so you can see trends and projects out in a various levels of optimism. It's got several different scenarios. So those of you who are involved with businesses, if you haven't already been on that website, it's really quite a, I think it's a valuable planning tool. John has been attending the Economic Impact Working Group meetings, which are Wednesday mornings. And he can help direct you to the website if you can't find it, which it's not, I looked again this morning, it's not that hard to find. At least it wasn't for me. On the Fourth of July, the Forest Service in the ski area, I met with the Forest Service in the ski area to talk about the Forest Service having issued a new closure order for having to stay on trails in various parts of Albion Basin. The goal is to, is resource conservation and resource repair, which I told them the town agrees with, and I think the ski area agrees with in general terms as well. The ski area spoke to some of their specific concerns about this being a rather brush instrument that they were using, as I understood their comments. I expressed my concern about this time in our national experience of the government telling people, "You can't walk here, you can't walk there," is probably going to engender some reaction from people in a way that it might not have in another year. And I was also, I also said to them, "I'm a little concerned about people being concentrated with other people." It's turning out that being outdoors is really quite a much better place to be. I did ask the Forest Service to see if they can focus their forest protection officers' efforts on keeping the Secret Lake Trail from becoming a super-spreading site, which I can imagine it could be. I have not been up there, but I'm assuming it's been, or soon will be crowded on that trail. July 3rd, the Salt Lake County meeting was canceled because of the holiday. On the second, I got out of order. So on the second, I met with, as a department chair at the top, with top administrators at the university. And Mike, you were talking about the sand shifting under your feet. We are doing incredible amounts of wheel spinning, it seems to me, to plan the reopening of the university. And yet every week, there's some new bit of information that's making us change our plans. And so it's a little bit, it's a little bit frustrating. My faculty members are really nervous, I'll say that. As our Health Sciences Division reported to us last week and has subsequently been reported nationally, the airborne virus is really the main issue, much more than surfaces. I look forward perhaps to greeting a young man named Jonah Turgerson, who is supposed to be a freshman at the University of Utah. But we'll see how much face-to-face time we end up with. On Monday, I went to the dentist. I was nervous about it. I think if you've got to go to the dentist, my advice is go now. Things are not going to get better over the next six months. And while I thought, okay, I can skip a six-month appointment, I don't want it to go until another year. So I went, now I got to go back and fix a filling. And I would make that comment to you about discretionary medical procedures. I think you can still get in for, you know, colonoscopy or a mammogram. And I know that a loved one of mine was scheduled for a mammogram in April and that got canceled. And if you can get in, I would do it now if you need it. Upcoming public meetings tomorrow, the CWC has a finance meeting at 3:30 online. The CWC Board Meeting is on the thirteenth. Normally, it would have been on the first Monday, but because July 6th had to do with, it was connected with the July 4th weekend, it was postponed until next, this coming Monday. UFA Board Meeting, 7:30 AM on the 21st of the month. Our next town council meeting is on the 12th of August. The town council meeting's at four. And the work session, presuming we schedule one, which we, I think is, that's the default, is three o'clock. For dog license, temporary dog licenses issued between the 5th of May and the, sorry, the 7th of, no, I'm confused. I just didn't change the dates when I made my notes from the last message from Jen. Anyway, in the last month, Paxton Mater had two fourteen-day permits. Pam Labadee had a fourteen-day permit and Brooke McLean had another fourteen-day permit. So that's it, that's what I've got to say from the mayor's report. Okay, discussion of possible action, adopting new water rates. It's Resolution 2020 R17 is the next item on the agenda. We discussed that earlier. Is there a motion to approve? I'm inviting a motion to approve Resolution 2020 R17.
So moved?
Is there a second? Second, Jay, discussion.
Well, Margaret, I had the items that I mentioned earlier in the work session about our water rate and an eight percent increase this year for residential and commercial as well is being proposed. But I continue to feel that water conservation should be incentivized by us and not just the same rate regardless of the overage that one is incurring. And also, I don't know, with the property tax increase that is going to occur as a result of the, as you said, forcing us to go to UFA, putting an additional burden on the property owners in this regard seems an excessive burden when we're also paying down the debt. So whether we could forbear that for a time period, not necessarily extinguish the debt, but delay that payment so that more of the revenue from the water is used for operating expenses. And then also the question about whether or not there would be any effective means of recovering both administrative costs and efficiency if we were to offer folks a discount for paying their standard rate for the full year ahead of time. And whether that would benefit the community as a whole.
I'll just point out, Margaret, that the arrangement with the UFA will not affect property taxpayers' taxes until they get their, until those are due in November of 2021. They will not see any increase the property tax that they pay in November of 2020.
You're right, I misspoke. Just in looking at the water rate increases that occurred over the last five years, they keep going up over time. And so I guess I fully expected that they would go up again next year. And so putting the cost this year for operating as if things were normal when they're not and not incentivizing conservation of water.
Yeah, let's work on that. I think great suggestions to make our, make our water rates address the right incentives and ultimately hopefully help our water users save money and save water. That will be awesome. I don't think that stands in the way of doing what we have to do today to just pay as we go.
Margaret, this is Jen. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying earlier. You did realize that the overage rate is above what the normal rate is, right? And what you, I believe that your comment was that within the overage rate, that there should maybe be tiers of overages and that the higher you go over, the more you should pay. Is, am I understanding that correctly? And you did know that there was a higher overage rate than the normal rate?
Yes, I understand. There is a base rate and then above the base rate, no matter if you go one gallon over the base or fifty thousand gallons, it's the same charge per thousand gallons that you're using over that excess or over the base. So yeah, I do understand that. So it is tiered or a stepped kind of cost mechanism that I'm suggesting. And that's something that Snowbird does for the service area. And again, that was their suggestion, was that they offer that discount for people to pay their entire annual allotment based upon their standard allocation. If they paid that all upfront, then they could get a discount and that money would then be available to the town. And interest drawn until the money had to be used to pay for the expenses that are part of that account.
I'll just say, interest rates are pretty low, but yes, it's better to have interest than have it upfront than not. How about if we follow Cliff's suggestion and have a conversation, you know, over the next, before this issue comes up again, we'll have a plan that's been vetted by a conversation with Keith Hansen. Would that be satisfactory as a way to proceed?
Yeah, from my perspective, it would be, depending on what you're suggesting, is before it comes up again. If you're talking about June of 2021, that may be a little late from my perspective, because again, the incentivizing of water conservation is something that I think the town should be actively pursuing. So if we could even amend the rate, if necessary, or whatever. And again, I thought Jen's email to us suggested that our mechanism hadn't changed in twenty-five years. And so I question whether we're really up to date on all of that. So if we could look at it in a nearer term than next June, when we typically are looking at the budget, that would absolutely satisfy my concerns.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about when we start the budget process in January or February.
If I could, I can definitely have a conversation with Keith Hansen. But I, as far as him doing any legwork, I know that in ninety-six, when we did this original resolution, John, we had a consultant spend a lot of time on the sewer and water rates. I think Tom Pollard was also pretty involved in that setting those, that new structure with the ECU count and all that. But, so as far as engaging a consultant to look at the whole structure, we could definitely do that before January. But I'm not sure we, and the tiers, I think that's a good idea. I'm not sure how much it would be used, because I don't think our people go over by huge amounts. And the paying upfront, I think, is a good idea. So. And the paying upfront, I think is a good idea. So I'm, I'm open to that, but I'm not sure how deep we can go into the, the actual study of the whole structure.
Well, we, we can do, we can study different things on different tracks and one thing doesn't have to wait for another. So before we go hiring consultants or asking Keith Hanson to do a lot of legwork beyond just starting to talk with Keith about it. There are tens of thousands of communities across the US alone that deal with the issue of how best to set water rates and create the right incentives and help people save money as well, save water. And I would venture to say that there's some good current published thinking about that, that we should be able to avail ourselves of.
I, I think you're right there, Cliff. Keith referred me to the Mountain Regional Water area in Summit County, and they have on their website, a list of their water rates and their, what they call the ERCs, which I think is maybe roughly equivalent to our ECUs and what the rates are for, for different things, what the base rate is and so on and so forth. So I don't know that we have to recreate the wheel, the water wheel, if you will. But I, I think you're right that there may be ways that we could look at this without necessarily going full bore and hiring a consultant, starting from scratch.
Just wanted to throw in my support for your ideas, Margaret. I think they're genius. And I strongly suspect that you probably have a lot of research under your belt already that would allow us to roll out some of these ideas very swiftly.
It sounds to me like we're ready to call the question. All those in favor, please of adopting the water rates expressed in resolution 2020 R 17, please signify by saying aye.
Sorry, just a minute here. Do we need an amendment to that with the idea of revisiting again, or it's just?
If you, if you want to propose an amendment to the motion, Margaret, that is your privilege. But I'd like to, I'd like to move along, but go ahead if that's what you want to do. I mean, I think we've come to an understanding, but if you want to, if you wanted to move to amend, that's fine.
No, I just, because we had come to an understanding, I didn't know if it was necessary to do more than the understanding that we seem to have reached in, in our oral discussion. So that was all.
Depends on how formal you want it to be.
I don't know that I need it to be formal. So I'm, I'm ready for you to call a question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I think, Margaret, I didn't quite catch you, but I think you said yes. I think you did.
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's five, five yeses. Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is discussion impossible action to adopt resolution 2020 R 18. This is really just a homework, a housekeeping effort to correct the certified tax rate that is included in the budget for the next fiscal year. We are not amending the budget other than, that's not on the agenda. It's just a question of changing, correcting the certified tax rate, right?
Yes.
So. Okay, so is, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a request, Piper. I, I don't know. Did you intend for all of these review track changes to be in the documents that were available to the public?
No, I, I just wanted the council to see.
Well, she's frozen up now, so I'm going to just make here. I am going to share the screen now that I have gotten rid of the track changes so that people are less confused about what it is that we're actually doing. It would be good to confirm that this is indeed what we're trying to pass. So if, I don't know, Piper, I don't see her anymore.
I can jump in because I was, I helped her with this. So she got the certified tax rate. She didn't get it in time or there was some confusion over it. So.
Is this the correct rate?
That's the correct rate. So double check that. But yes, that's the correct rate and that's the rate that we would need to do so that we don't have any kind of truth in taxation.
Okay, good. Yeah, we did not mean to, we did not mean to change that this time. That was not ever part of our conversation. And so that number, as I understand it, is now being reflected in this document. And that's the difference between these two numbers here. And as we talked about in the work session, that $1,500 also is reflected in the amount in the general fund.
I'm on mute.
So that's what, that's what this resolution is meant to accomplish.
I move that we adopt resolution 2020 R 18.
Is there a second? Okay. All right. Any, any further discussion? Okay, good. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, I think I heard five ayes. So that resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda is new business.
I, I guess this maybe is subsumed with our earlier discussion about the water, but and looking into other explorations of that. But the second item I had in terms of new business was potentially establishing a committee to explore options regarding our public safety expenses. As, as you correctly pointed out, we really didn't have any choice this year but to pursue U F S A because of the cost differential between that and UFA. But I'm wondering if we could establish a committee to explore other options and funding our public safety. And that would be something that I would like to see.
Public safety in general or fire specifically?
My suggestion is maybe both, that there may be options that relate to fire. There may be a way, and I haven't talked to Mike Mori about this at all, but a way for dual certification so that we have central and the Marshals Office, both public safety for law enforcement as well as fire and/or EMS.
And that was kind of a trendy thing a few years ago. And some people are still doing it where the public safety officers are both police and fire. And there are still, like I said, there are some places that are doing it, but by and large, cops want to be cops. Firefighters want to be firefighters. Torgerson and Mori can go at it all they want, but I don't think they want to be the same. We can look at it. Giving you a heads up. It, it, it didn't, it, there are separate skill sets, different skill sets. It didn't really work out as well as, as a lot of people thought. Oh, look, if this guy can be a cop and a firefighter, we only need one person instead of two.
I will tell you, Margaret, that I feel like I spent huge a number of hours on the fire question. And I spent a fair number of hours looking into UPD because Salt Lake County insisted, when we were talking about fire, that we could save money by coming into UPD, which I investigated and decided was not an accurate statement. But in any case, for my part, I don't, I am not going to spend any more time investigating this. If town council members want to do that, that is okay with me. But I don't think that any budget implications can be committed in the, in this year to that.
No, I guess my, my thought in terms of new business was not necessarily a committee of the town staff or council members per se as maybe a citizen committee. I've gotten queries about something like that from a number of residents.
I think citizens can, can knock themselves out investigating whatever they want to investigate. That's.
Right, but if they investigate and the council is not interested in hearing ideas or considering ideas that may be presented, it's kind of a waste of, of time and, and effort. So I'm trying to both address the citizens' concern and the time that you and others have already invested in trying to come up with the best solution, given the circumstances that we had, and see if maybe over the next eight to 10 months, we can evaluate and say, yeah, indeed, it's the best way to go. There's no other alternative that's better. Or here's some other ideas that may work or may not or whatever. Just to, to address the concerns of, of the citizens that have come forward so far.
Yes, absolutely. We're, we are deeply concerned about the costs that have been put on us by UFA. And wide open and interested to hear study of facts and approaches that we may have overlooked would be absolutely interested in hearing that kind of information. Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think, I think that we, we didn't take any suggestion lightly, I don't think. We just weren't able to navigate a way through. But I think we all would be happy to pay less.
Right. I, I, I think you probably have unanimous support for that here.
And I'll just reflect back to something that Jay said earlier about their strategic plan. If, if, if their strategic plan wants to include a different member fee procedure, you know, as a board member, I'll be part of that. And I, I don't know that that, a different procedure would necessarily save the town about the money that the UFA or the U F S A were to recommend, but certainly will be part of that on that side too. And I'll continue to report that best I can. And of course, all of their documents, bunch of documents like a member fee issues are public, as are all of the proceedings of the board. So I would say anybody who wants to organize themselves into that, I think that's, that's fine. I misunderstood where you were headed. Am I interested in what?
Oh, no, I, I'm just throwing in my support. I'm, I would be interested in serving.
Oh, I misheard you. I thought you, I beg your pardon. I thought you were asking me a question, what, what I was interested. Okay.
And I think I can volunteer Mike and myself to help out so that we're on the ground level.
And, and the Mike that you're volunteering is?
Marshall Mike Mori.
Okay.
He's still not smiling.
Everybody named Mike.
Exactly. Committee of Mikes. Okay. Well, I will communicate with the people that have communicated with me and.
Yeah, have, have the ideas keep coming.
Okay, great.
Yes, I.
Jay, yeah, go ahead.
So this might be an opportunity, if you do have an interested citizen that, that is interested. I can't speak for the law enforcement side of things, but with us doing the strategic plan, you know, we want to look at strengths, weaknesses, challenges that we have. And, you know, you as citizens or town members could bring that as a, as a stakeholder and say, look, you know, we saw an increase in our fee structure. This was a challenge for us. And, you know, we would like to be part of your strategic plan moving forward and, and let you know what we're looking for in a, in a public safety provider. These are the things that are important to us. And, and that would be an opportunity for those, those concerns to be voiced for sure.
I just want to apologize to the council. I guess I haven't been clear enough in the last 11 years on how bad I want to be a firefighter.
Fix that, Mike.
And when you say how bad, Mike? You've been pretty clear about how much you want to be a firefighter.
Really that late?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think it's too late for that.
Well, if we don't get one, we're going to be here longer.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks very much.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.